Which no longer needed for public purposes as per the attached list.
Motion by Nakant, second by Lewis. Counsel discussion. There is none any blue cards.
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 125, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell at an internet auction miscellaneous surplus LUS fiber movable property which is no longer needed for public purposes as per the attached list.
Motion by Nakant, second by Lewis. Counsel discussion. There is none any blue cards.
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District eight?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven? Motion is approved. Ordinance 126, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council authorizing the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government to sell at an internet auction miscellaneous surplus fiber stock property which is no longer needed for public purposes as per the attached list.
Motion by Nakant, second by Cook. Counsel discussion. There is none any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District nine?
Yes.
District one?
Yes.
District two? District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Again, we're going to defer item number 13 until the August 22 council meeting to allow additional review of the language. We will now move to item 14, please.
Ordinance 129, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending the fiscal year 1617 operating budget of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government by authorizing the receipt of $25,000 in donations from the Petco Foundation and appropriated revenues within the Animal Control Shelter Fund and by reducing anticipated revenues in the Animal Shelter Fees line item.
Motion by Conk, second by Cook. Counsel discussion. There is none any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight? District nine?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 139, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council declaring the building or structure located at 111 14th Street Lafayette Louisiana owned by Stephen Broke care of jail J block attorney appointed to be dilapidated and dangerous to the public welfare in order in the condemnation of saint.
Entertainer motion. Motion by Nakant, second by Castile. Counsel discussion. There isn't any blue cards?
Yes, sir.
Please call the vote.
District two?
Yes.
District three?
Yes.
District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine? District one?
Yes.
Motion is approved. Ordinance 142, 2017. An ordinance of the Lafayette City Parish Council amending and restating chapter 10 animals of the Lafayette City Parish Consolidated Government Code of Ordinances to consolidate the articles currently affecting the city of Lafayette and unincorporated areas of the parish of Lafayette to revise outdated provisions to include new provisions pertaining to the community cat diversion program and to shelter intake and release of animals and to change the name of the Lafayette Animal Control Center to the Lafayette Animal Care Center.
Motion by Nakant, second by Lewis. Okay, there's a proposed amendment. This is coming from the request of legal. They want to delete certain provisions regarding fines for animals running at large and for animals who have not been registered or vaccinated. Can I get a motion? Conk moves, Nakant seconds. Okay, we're going to open up the discussion by council members on the amendment. On the amendment. There's no discussion on the amendment. I know we got a lot of emails, so I'm sure there's a lot of people signed in to speak. To, I don't know who told them to send all them emails. We're going to smoke y'all out tonight. My inbox got backed up. How many speakers do we have for this item?
Five.
Oh, okay, that's not bad. They coordinated themselves. Okay, let's see, we could do this a little simple. The five people who signed up for this item, can you raise your hand? Does any, y'all heard the explanation? Do y'all want to speak to the amendment or do y'all want to speak to the ordinance after it's amended? Anybody want to speak to the amendment? Let me hear your voice. Okay, that's good enough for you, counselor?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to consider that sufficient for addressing blue cards on the amendment and there was no council discussion, so let's vote on the amendment, please.
District three? District four?
Yes.
District six?
Yes.
District seven?
Yes.
District eight?
Yes.
District nine? District one?
Yes.
District two?
Yes.
Motion to adopt, to amend is approved.
Okay, so, hey, she got it right. Don't panic. So now we're going to open up the Florida council members to speak to the ordinance as it has been amended. And Mr. Benoit, you addressing this? And Mr. Robidoux, that's who you're pointing to? Y'all depend on him a lot. Couple of questions. The first, on the capture and release, can you walk me through that process? And when I say the process, specifically, where do we release? When the release take place after, after the capture and the spay or the neuter and the tagging and all of the process and then it's done, what determines release locations?
The release location, well, first of all, let me back up and say there've been a trap neuter return component were going on in Lafayette for many, many years and thousands of animals have been brought to spay nation by caregivers and neighbors where they were spayed, neutered, ear tipped and returned to the original location or neighborhood from which they came. I have a gentleman here from Waco who's the director of their animal control facility who's one of the speakers and they've been through the target zero, no kill, trap neuter return have had tremendous success and he's going to speak in a few minutes and give you an idea of how well it's worked for them.
So the response is the animals should be returned and released in proximity to the area where they were captured?
Yes, sir, absolutely, yes.
Okay, all right. From the feasibility assessment or evaluation of this, and as it relates to cost effectiveness, what did we consider on our side as far as LCG is concerned on the services we provide? I know this is supposed to be very much cost effective as opposed to having to hold and even adoption, hope for adoption, and of course if not adoption then there's an inappropriate ending, I'mma call it, I guess, but that cost, did we apply that cost against what it's going to take and who is going to be responsible for the picking up of the units? Because as I knew it today, the last time I was in need, if I wanted to, if I was having a problem with loose running animals coming and affecting my pets on my flower bed, on my vehicles, I had to go and pick up a unit?
Right.
Bait the unit, capture the animal, I had to deliver it to animal care as we call it now and return the trap. Who's going, so the question is, is who is doing that service? And if we're doing it, the government side of it, was that cost considered as it relates to the comparison of the savings that would come from the program itself?
Yes, that's a good question. That's one of the things we looked at from the beginning.
Why y'all so surprised with my questions?
You know, we looked at that from the beginning. One of the things right now, as you indicated, a neighbor would go get a, go get a trap, trap a cat, bring it to the shelter. Those are mostly feral cats which cannot be adopted or rescued, so unfortunately all of them are euthanized, you know, over a thousand last year, 2,000 the previous year. What this will do, instead of having to bring all those animals through the system, bring them to the shelter, keep them for the five day stray hole or the three day stray hole in the amount of cats, we'll be able to bring them to the provider that will spay neuter them, give them a rabies shot, ear tip them and release them right away instead of having to hold them and/or euthanize them and cremate them.
So who is that? Is it still the neighbor or the landowner or are we doing that service?
The landowner would bring the animal in and we would take it from that point forward. We would have it spayed, neutered, we'd give it a rabies shot, we'd ear tip it and we would return it. The animal, the landowner would not be required to return it.
So that we still going to get the trap as well?
Yes.
The, so in this program as we know it to become, the trap and release, the initial part of doing the trap, the landowner, the resident still has to go and obtain the trap. LCG through animal care is not going to be putting the traps out upon demand?
No, that is correct.
It's going to still be the responsibility?
Right.
So if I have a problem near my home, I'm going to call, they're going to tell me you could come and get a trap?
Right.
I go get the trap, I set it, I didn't bring it, so that process don't change?
That's correct.
It's just that what's going to happen at that point is that animal care is going to do these processes and then release the animal back?
Yes, sir.
When we talk about release, because some of the issues are related to unwanted activity, cat prints on Cadillacs and Mercedes Benz? Neither do I, but my neighbor, my neighbor got a good job. Digging up flower beds, you know what sometimes what cats do or others for that matter, sometimes it's not the cat, but the cat gets the blame a lot. So the point being, if a resident, I'mma use myself, if I bring an animal in and I say, I don't want this animal back by my house, which is the capture point, so what would ultimately be the release point? Is that such a request?
Yes, I mean, if the cat, if we have a problem with a, with a cat that's a nuisance that is repetitively causing problems, does a nuisance provision in the ordinance? Well, if the cat is truly a nuisance, it could be considered for euthanasia. I mean, we're not going to have them bring it in and again and again. One of the great things about the TNR thing is, of course, it reduces your cat population. Right now, we're euthanizing thousand plus cats last year. Our cat populations continuing to grow. We're not eliminating, we're not doing the spay neuters. We might eliminate them, we might trap some from a colony, but the colony is going to repopulate. So our numbers are not going down, they're going up. As Mr. Blam will tell you from Waco, their numbers drop precipitously when they put this program in. The other good thing about it is it drastically reduces your nuisance calls for cats because they're not as much of a nuisance once they're spayed, neutered.
Can you define that P word for my colleague right? He said that was a big word.
Precipitously?
But Robert, this is my question. I, as a person who trapped the cat, don't want it back in my community, in my, around my house. Is there such a thing? Do we, can we honor something like that or is the answer no?
The way this program works is you trap, neuter and return them to the neighborhood from whence they came, at least the first time.
Okay.
And the gentleman from Waco is going to be able to articulate that because he said they had very, very few complaints because once they go back, it's, you know, the animal's been spayed, neutered. So the problems that are associated with nuisance are drastically reduced.
Okay.
In other words, like spay nation is ear tipped?
No, no, wait a minute, wait a minute, let's be clear because I'm trying to ask a simple question. I don't want my dog barking at the cat all night. So, and let's talk about Lafayette. Can a person request that the cat not be returned to that location? That, to me, that's a yes or a no. That's, I just want to know so I could address this issue.
The way this ordinance is structured, the cat would be returned to the neighborhood.
So that's not an option?
Not an option.
And it's mandatory upon the first time?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I needed to know. Okay, Mr. Terrio.
To follow up a little bit on what Mr. Boudreau said, what would be the cutoff? How many times would he have to?
Well, the nuisance provision in the ordinance talks about if the cat is causing problems of the interference of the livelihood of the residents. We'll have to, we would have to look at that. I would think certainly a second or third offense would certainly be considered a nuisance. Spay nation has returned approximately 15,000 or 20,000 cats over the last 10 or 15 years. They're spayed, neutered and they're ear tipped. We almost endeavor get an ear tipped cat back in the shelter. We might have one out of 150 or 200, which would mean in last year we might get 10 out of 1,000 that came in that had already been spayed, neutered. It's less than one out of 100, so it's a very rare occurrence.
All right, very good, thank you. Couple of things I want to mention here and I want everybody, I've gotten a number of questions. I've had a conference call with, I think, three veterinarians and I've got questions, we have questions that we're going to present to you, but I want to let those listening or watching know, and the rest on the council probably know too, I live out in the country. I've got more animals probably than everybody in here combined. I've got 25 ducks, 10 to 15 chickens and roosters, three cats, dogs, birds, other things like that. So animals are a part of my everyday life, so, and my three cats are all spayed, neutered, so.
That's why you only have three?
Yes. Yeah, but we always see the ones that people drop off at the road all the time, yes. So the first question, Mr. Benoit, and I think you and I kind of touched base on this earlier, is that we have an ordinance before us, but we also have what currently has an animal advisory board where each council member reports somebody, appoints somebody to it, the administration does and other ones. Now, I've spoken to three of the advisory members, board members, and they were unaware of the ordinance coming up before us, so they were not contacted, more or less, they were not, they were unable to advise on their position on this, so I wanted to get your opinion on that.
I've had a few conversations early on with Dr. Renee Poirier who's on the advisory board, and some of the main alterations in the original ordinance from which we started came from one of the advisory board members. The advisory board has not been a full complement of 11 members for I don't know how many years. There are still currently several vacancies on it. Ms. Abear was on, I think she can tell you, the advisory board very rarely meets. Mostly when they meet, they meet to have to decide whether or not a bite case is a dangerous or vicious animal that put down. I'd like to involve the advisory board a lot more in policy decisions once we get them, once we get all the positions filled because I think they have some good minds on there that can help us, but I really haven't had, the only people that reached out to me from the advisory board who knew about this are the people I spoke with. A lot of the changes were from Dr. Poirier.
Okay, but we do have enough members on the advisory board currently to make a core?
Yes, we do, yeah, absolutely. I think there's three vacancies currently.
All right, so that was the first question. In dealing with cats, in the changes here, the major revisions and that. And I think also touched base with you and Ms. Pratt. Ms. Pratt, in reference to this, we have a definition here where we're adding a definition for these types of cats and for community cat givers, it's called a community cat.
Right.
But a community cat in all intents and purposes is a stray.
Absolutely. It might have a caregiver that cares for it and gives it feeds and has it spayed, neutered or ear tipped at spay nation heretofore, but yeah, just in all intent and purposes, it's a cat that doesn't live in a home, yes.
Okay. So in following up on the previous conversation with Boudreau, Mr. Boudreau and ourselves on dealing with the cats that are returned, we have these cats that are returned, that will get on cars, they're going to get in the flower beds, they're going to spray. People seem to think that a cat that's spayed and neutered can't spray. That's not the case. I don't know if you guys can agree to that or not, but I've got cats that are spayed, neutered and they can still spray, especially the males. So that still happens. We've got window screens from cats that have been, you know, spayed, neutered, everything deals with that, that get ripped up because cats will go to homes and jump on the screens, cars, doors, the window screens. Also had one that mentioned that one of these particular cats that was spayed and neutered actually goes to their resident and beats up their cat that lives at their house. So that's another issue. And another thing they do is they come and they eat the cat food that's left out for.
For a domestic cat?
Yeah, for a domestic cat that's at their home. So I don't want to get into depth because that's just some of these, some of these questions. I mean, again, in dealing, you're going to be returning some of these animals back to the same location. How do we address those concerns about taking a cat that's participating in these kind of activities? I mean, are we still going to go one or two and then call it a nuisance?
If there are repetitive cases, yeah, we would have to call it a nuisance and look into euthanizing a cat. But as I indicated, we had 1,000 cats euthanized last year, less than 10 had been ear tipped and spayed, neutered. So the amount of nuisance complaints, once they've been neutered, rabies shot, the rabies doesn't calm them down, obviously the spay neuter does, but the instance of nuisance complaints dramatically declined once they've been spayed, neutered.
Got you. Now, to follow up on that, and I'm going to tell you this from experience because again, I live out in the country and I've tried this many, many times. I've been successful a lot of times and a lot of times, well, sometimes I haven't. There are some cats you will not catch. I guarantee you, there are some cats that are so smart and privy, they will not get in a, have a hard trap, they're not going to get in any of these other traps.
Like coyotes, you're right, they're smart.
And bobcats. So what happens to these cats, like Mr. Boudreau says, didn't mean to cut you off, that if he can't catch a cat that is, we call it a community cat, which is a stray?
Right.
That's doing all these episodes that I mentioned earlier?
What do you do if you can't catch it?
Well, I'm saying that this ordinance addresses catching the cats.
Right.
What about all the cats that can't be caught?
I don't have any, if you can't catch the cat, there's nothing we, you know, if the cat won't go in a trap and it can't be caught, I don't know that there's anything you can do about that wily of a cat.
Okay, so it's just a point that.
It won't go in a trap and you can't catch it?
Yeah.
You're not going to be able to catch it.
There are ways. We have a law, this law is going to affect stray cats.
Yes, sir.
Let's suppose that you have a homeowner, and I'm just throwing this hypothetical out there. You've got a homeowner that has a cat that's a problem, that goes to a neighbor's yard and goes here and roams the neighborhood, okay? The law will affect the stray cats, but if you have a homeowner that has a cat that does some of the things I mentioned earlier and you go to a homeowner's house to say, hey, this is your cat, their out would be to say, no, that's not my cat, that's a stray cat. So you guys will take it, spay and neuter it and then come back and release it to the same location when it actually belongs to maybe another owner or an owner in that area.
Well, may I say?
Yes.
I think in your instance where you have this cat that is a problem, it might rise to the level of a nuisance and I think at the time you bring it in, if you file a complaint that it is such a nuisance, then at that point, you know, that's when the animal care center will get, it falls under that particular ordinance and will go in and assess the situation and determine if it in fact is a nuisance and deal with it accordingly.
Okay. And the main goal here is to stop cats from being euthanized?
That is correct.
Yes. And even more important, stop the proliferation of cats. Euthanizing them is what we're doing now and our cat population continues to rise. Our goal is to reduce the population of stray or feral cats in Lafayette Parish, and this ordinance will achieve that.
And what?
Euthanizing them is not decreasing our population at all.
The community diversion program is aimed at managing feral cats and that population, but doing it in a humanly or humane fashion. They kind of take care of themselves.
Okay. Next question, dealing with the impoundment. One comment that was made to me is that it appears as though unowned cats have a higher priority under these provisions than an own cat in dealing with the stray holes.
What, I'm sorry, say that again?
I said, unowned cat, which means just a stray?
Right.
Has a higher priority than a owned cat, one that's owned by a resident, a legal, you know?
I'm not sure you mean by higher priority. We do have a three day stray hole for owned pet, owned cats, whereas the feral cats that come in have no stray hole. So yes, there is, if you have a cat that, and your cat gets loose and it winds up in a trap at the shelter, it's not a feral cat and we can tell feral cats from non-feral cats.
Right.
We keep it for three days to give the homeowner a chance to come retrieve their animal.
But the stray hole period is for seven days for the feral?
That's with regard to dogs.
Yeah. Yeah, for the dogs, three on that.
And we did change that from five to seven. Our previous ordinance was five, the state law is seven, so unfortunately, we had to increase it, which is not a, there's, you know, there's two sides of the coin on that. Some say you need to have it as less as possible, some say more, but we did increase the stray hole on dogs to match state law.
Okay. I had, I had an emailed question for me dealing with the, okay, will this amendment, how will or who will monitor the organization who pulls an animal that may be lost, lost, and ensure that the organization does not transport the lost animal before the seven days for dogs, three days for cats, whole period, out of state or hidden within their system while the owner is looking for their pet?
We ensure that all animals are subject to the stray hole. We have an arrangement with rescues that we deal with such as Akadian Animal Aid, which has been by far our largest rescue group. This ordinance allows them to take animals before the stray hole is up but requires them to keep it for the stray hole. For example, if we get some young puppies in, they're probably better off with them than in our shelter. So they, this ordinance will allow them to take them, however, they have to abide by the stray hole.
Okay.
Before they can rescue them, you know, and many of them, as you know, go out of state.
Let's see here. In addition to that, the same person was asking, I see that, and look, I'm not familiar with this, but I think it deals with the, the question here was, why would you not want the shelter supervisor or a shelter field supervisor on the advisory board? They're the ones who deal with cruelty cases and such matters and they have their expertise and knowledge of such cases. I think that was addressed to maybe the mayor president's appointment, so.
The mayor president can appoint anybody he chooses. The current ordinance requires that it be the shelter supervisor. Typically on boards and commissions, the staff are the staff for a board or commission and not a voting member. And that's why we thought the allowance of the mayor president to appoint whoever he wanted to that position was how most boards operate. Very few boards have a staff member who serves the board and votes on the board. That's very rare.
Okay, very good. Now, also under impoundment, another question posed is that you guys are going up on the euthanasia rates to $75?
That's for paid euthanasia. If you choose?
Yeah.
To have your animal euthanized, right now, our rate is $12. Vets charge way more than that. We're trying to get in line with the private sector so that we're not competing with the private sector at a fraction of the cost.
Okay, and here's where some people may see this as a catch 22 and maybe some not because basically it says the owner requested euthanasia rates are going to go up to 75.
Right.
But also, this will allow the center to rescue or adopt these animals prior to euthanasia.
Right.
Which means the question becomes, okay, we have an owner who says, I'm going to pay $75 to have this cat euthanized, you're not going to euthanize it and I just paid you $75. So are you going to give the $75 back to the owner that just paid you to euthanize?
No, we will not. And I got this actually from Calcasieu Parish who instituted this quite some time back with their program. They have some people that want to get rid of a dog or a cat for whatever reason. Could be elderly parent that died, they don't want to put up with it, they just want to get rid of it. Heretofore, they brought it to us because it was $12 and they said, we don't want it, euthanize it. This will allow us, and many of these animals are adoptable or rescuable. They might have a dog that got hit by a car, a three-legged dog. Believe it or not, a three-legged dog is one of the easiest we have to adopt.
And I understand where you're coming from and, Ms. Pratt, one thing you may, or maybe you've already done it, my suggestion would be that when they're, I'm sure they got to sign something over when they pay $75 to euthanize it, right?
They release them.
Okay. While they're doing that, can you also add a clause that stipulates that there may be some animal rescue or there may potentially be something, you know, in there on the verbiage on whatever they're signing that states something, or a rescue unit may come in, in the event somebody wants the dog, it may not be euthanized and that's included even with the 75?
That would not pose a problem for me.
You see where I'm coming with that?
Yes, absolutely.
That way it doesn't have that question that, I want my money back because I paid you for a service, you didn't provide the service.
Right.
You know?
I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Well, and the ordinance itself. Well, and the ordinance itself provides that, look, notwithstanding, we have the option or the ability to put the animal up for adoption, even though you're bringing it in to be euthanized.
Okay.
Or disposed of.
Okay. But you guys understand where I was coming with this?
Yes.
So, common sense. Let's see, getting under the rabies, let's see. Now, this was some concerns by a number of vets. Is that we have cats in dealing with rabies. There are some cats that also have leukemia and other illnesses, and they can pass those Whenever a stray cat is brought in, it's being spayed and neutered, but vaccinated also? Okay. So, that jumped into the next veterinarian question. Okay. When it deals with rabies and other kinds of, of vaccinations, veterinarians usually do it on a one, two-year basis, because most vaccinations will last one to three years max, maybe four. Okay? So every one of the stray cats that are going to be picked up initially and vaccinated, how can we be sure and is, or are we guaranteeing that every one of those are going to be-
It will be, all of those will have three-year vaccine, three-year vaccinations. There will all be a three-year vaccine.
Which, not, they don't necessarily last three years, so usually-
Right. I think a lot of them require after one-year booster.
Right.
But they are a three-year vaccine, but a booster is required after one-
So in this instance, I'm not expecting you guys to go out and catch every stray cat, you know, again, and require that, but who's paying the bill to do the revaccinations on all these? Or is it just going to be, as each one is caught coming back in, you guys going to check ear tipping and, and verify that and then vaccinate them again if they need to? If it's being caught over and over again?
If, if it's over and over again, they will probably be considered a nuisance, but if they come in a second time and require vaccination, we will vaccinate them.
In dealing with rabies, in the ordinance, it basically states that you may have some in-home, in-home-
Quarantine.
Yeah, quarantine. And it also stipulates that you have somebody, I'm not going to say who, but somebody may show up at your residence to verify that you're quarantining your animal. Their big question is that, how can you actually be sure that these animals are being quarantined? Because there's a lot of animals at one, at any given time that need to be quarantined, and who has the resources to be visiting them so many hours a day? They may go in the morning, and then for the rest of the day, you have an animal-
It actually requires for an in-home quarantine, which is a new component, that the person's vet goes and looks at the animal and gives us a report. It requires their vet to provide that to us. So, if they choose to in-home quarantine, their veterinarian has to send us a report.
Okay. I, I thought there was something that also said, some other animal care provider may also be able to do the same thing.
Well, we also are able to go check to make sure the animal is in home quarantine. And we have to approve it. This is a new concept that Virginia suggested. I think it has a lot of merit, and we're willing to try it. Hopefully it'll work, but if it doesn't, we don't have to allow in-home quarantines necessarily. Right now, it's a veterinary, or if it's a bike case, or we keep it. That's only two options.
Got you. All right. In dealing with tags, I saw you guys are going up on the, the tags.
Yes, sir.
Uh, where was that? Oh, yeah. Two fifty to four dollars.
Correct.
Uh, for spayed neutered animals, and then eight dollars for non-spayed neuters. Just to give you an idea, in some of these that I spoke to, these tags, you want to tell everybody where the tags come from?
I mean, we make the tags and the veterinarians buy them from us.
LCG makes the tags and the veterinarians buy them, so it's an increase. And the average veterinarian will buy anywhere from eight hundred to twelve, thirteen hundred tags a month.
Yeah, but yeah, well, not a month. We sell thirty thousand a year parish-wide, and we have-
No, I'm, I'm, I was told a month.
We sold thirty-two thousand tags this year, total.
Yeah. So it must be a good vet, huh? But-
Yeah, I mean, I have the, the numbers of tags we sold each year for the last five years, we, it's never been that volume. The highest it's been is forty-seven thousand in a year.
Okay.
Between all of the vets and the-
What I was told, and that, it's just a high number, and if they're having to purchase them, I guess their comment was that, in, I'm not mistaken, they gave me, in Texas, vets can sell their own tags, it's not a government function.
Right. Louisiana is different than many states, that is correct.
Got you.
But it's my understanding that they get reimbursed from the, the owner of the animal and then probably charge a little more for that and then some.
If you go to your veterinarian, yeah, if you go to your veterinarian for rabies tags, right now, we're charging two fifty, it's been two fifty, nobody knows when it changed last. Troy Venable recently retired, he'd been there twenty-eight years, it was before that. And when you go to your vet, depending on your vet, it could be anywhere from fifteen to twenty-eight or thirty bucks, but we sell the tag to them for two fifty, and the vaccine costs a dollar or two.
So far, you see, I've been asking questions, y'all been able to answer them, right? You know, we're worried about the hard balls. I also read in here that in dealing with, I guess, nuisance animals or something, or, no, actually it was under the rabies, there was something about a sworn complaint. Let's see if I can find that. Procedure for declaring an animal potentially dangerous-
Potentially dangerous, yes.
Yes.
What page, are you in the ordinance?
I'm sorry?
Are you looking in the ordinance?
I'm looking at the provision that shows me, actually, this is on the sheet, that shows the major revisions additions, Article Two, Animal Care, this was put at the end of our ordinance, with the specifics as to what was being changed. Yes, the bullet points.
Oh, it's on page twenty-two in our ordinance standing.
And it's under the one, Article Four, Potentially Dangerous and Vicious Animals.
Right.
I guess what I've heard is that, first question is that, we hardly ever see a sworn complaint about a vicious animal.
Well, we get complaints actually sworn by animal control officers.
By animal, but I'm talking about by individuals.
Right.
So, I mean, that is a rare case, from what I'm being told. So, I mean, does that affect it in any way? Because I see this here, I mean, we have this added in the ordinance, is there something that we're going to try and streamline that, or, or does this line particularly just only deal with the animal control officers?
I think it basically provides that it starts out or is initiated by sworn complaint, which may be by the animal control officer or some other interested party.
Yeah, that's on page twenty-four, Tammy.
Requires sworn complaint and notification to owner, okay.
An animal control officer or any adult person may request an animal be classified as a potentially dangerous, dangerous or vicious by submitting a sworn written complaint on a proof form of LCG. And that just initiates the process and the hearing involved in determining.
And dealing with hearings, you guys, you don't have any quorum problems with that?
No, we don't really have a whole lot of the meetings, because there's not that many of them, but I don't think Virginia, quorum problem, quorum has not really been a problem. We need six.
Okay. And-
And we also, one other thing we changed is we now allow fourteen days for the hearing to give the board a little more time, here the four was ten.
That's what I was-
Just to give them a little bit more time, we moved it at Virginia's request to fourteen, which makes a lot of sense.
Okay. And, and look, I want to be very clear, there were a lot of, a lot of issues here that you guys had in the bullet points that the vets agreed with, they were okay, they had some concerns about some of these questions, which if you think about it, every question I asked you, from a mindset, that's what a vet thinks about.
Right.
Okay? So-
Well, we've talked to many, many vets, maybe not some of the ones you talked to, but I've talked to many, many vets about this ordinance along the way. I think this is version, Tammy and I, is version twenty-eight of the ordinance that since we started working on it.
And then I think I'd asked you guys earlier, when was this initially created? A long time ago, before the First Amendment? Because I know we did the, what was it, the aviary?
Aviary, there was an amendment addressing that, only I know that because I did it.
That was a few years ago.
But insofar as, you know, the initial ordinances, as they were, I mean, it occurred at the time of consolidation, they were basically appended together. A lot of, some of the changes that were made were the consolidation of those articles that affect the city of Lafayette, as well as the unincorporated parishes of Lafayette, to make them consistent, cleaner. But, a lot of those were made the same, but just consolidated.
All right. Final question from them, is that naturally, anything that we see here, or that's proposed that doesn't appear to be working, can come back and be changed and adjusted?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You know, we think this is a good starting point. Obviously, we may tweak it as time goes on. We're committed to making Lafayette Shelter a no-kill shelter. This is imperative step in that process. We know this is not perfect, and we're willing to come back with y'all to tweak it as it need arises.
And what happens to the vicious dog that nobody wants? Say, you know, a vicious nuisance dog?
The vicious dog is euthanized.
Is euthanized.
That's inconsistent with state law.
So, technically, yes, it's no-kill, but some that have to, under the circumstances, it is what it is.
The no-kill moniker really is ninety percent plus live outcome is when you talk about a no-kill shelter. It's not actually no-kill, it's ninety percent kill. The gentleman from Waco is going to tell you how they went from their very high numbers to last year, somewhere in the neighborhood of eight-point-seven percent, which is phenomenal. But no-kill does not actually mean zero kill, yes.
Got you. Guys, appreciate it. Thank you so much. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terrio. Tammy and Robert and even Joel, if y'all want to start considering, I'm, I'm having an issue with the nuisance. I, I ventured to say, and, and I think myself and Councilman Lewis deal with what we call nuisance more than anybody else on this council. When I take the time to go pick up a trap, to trap the animal, it has already been a nuisance to me. So, the mandatory one return back to the location, I have a problem with that. So, I don't know if y'all could look at that language and address that issue? And then, in addition to that, I'm not looking for cats that is trapped in my front yard to be put in somebody else's front yard. So, I, and, because that has been a concern, one of the legitimate issues, people think that, oh, they capture them, they bring them all to one area, you know, and, and so I'm not advocating for that, but somehow, some way, I need y'all to look at that. I'm not going to allow a law, because I'm, I'm just comparing to housing just for a second. When we define nuisance, people have to go through a lot before they could get corrective action. And I'm thinking that if somebody is going to go and pick up a trap, come back and bait it, and then return it to the care center, that they have a nuisance on their hands already. So, the, the one, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Robert indicated that it's mandatory, one-time re-release. I want to see if we could address that somehow. So, Mr. Robert, do you, I see you chimed in.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the, the comments, and, and I, I guess the one, the one thing I want to make sure that we don't do is let the perfect become the enemy of good here. And, and, and so, we could have one homeowner that, that looks at this community cat, this neighborhood cat as a nuisance, and there may be the seven that are feeding them that don't view it that way. And, so the problem becomes a lot more complicated than just having the one person that goes and takes the time to get the trap, when in fact, the majority of the folks up and down the, the street or two where that cat is, is living is the ones that are feeding them, and they, they don't view them as a nuisance. And I don't know what the, what the answer is. And, but I'm willing for us to continue to have those discussions, knowing that we will never get this to, to take care of a hundred percent of the problems in the way that we all want it to. And so whether that's a one-time return, or a three-time return, or a never return, I, I don't know. We need to have those conversations. But I do know that, that this ordinance is going to prevent us from euthanizing one, two, three thousand cats a year. It'll allow us to do something different, and I'll be the first one to, to come in front the council and say, it's not working, we still euthanizing just as many cats and, and having all these nuisance problems. But, I obviously believe that all the work that's been done for the last year and a half, the, and I appreciate the council's efforts, giving us a new caregiver, giving us an adoption foster coordinator, and all those little steps that we've made that have allowed us to cut it in half, our, our, or improve our live outcomes by double, this step is going to be what allows us to get to the no-kill status. This, there's no way to achieve it without this step, and I would ask that you allow us that opportunity and to work through the other issues that you're bringing up, which are legitimate issues, as we move forward. And so, thank you.
And just, just so I could address it properly, when you say this step, you're talking about the step of a one-time return?
No, I'm sorry. This step meaning the, the passage of this ordinance.
This ordinance, yeah. Well, let me tell you something, I'm in support of the ordinance, but when you're in support of something, it can be tweaked, because I, I totally get what you're saying, but, again, to compare it to a housing issue, that's how rental property owners who don't live in neighborhoods where bad houses are think, is that it's not any, it's not as big an issue. I'm saying tonight, it's an issue. The, the, the effort to do that, it's an issue. And absolutely, the seven, eight, ten individuals who are feeding, look, I used to represent a constituent who fed everywhere, okay? And, 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 you know, our laws wasn't very pleasant to her, people didn't like that, and she fed at schools and all kind of stuff, so, you know, we have these parameters, but this issue, like I say, I, I, I prefer dogs more than cats, I prefer horses, those types of animals. I'm saying that it's a nuisance when someone acts. And, I think, Mr. Terrio, you asked for something. I think that a, a simple, again, when, when a person goes through those measures and make that return, that person should be allowed to say, because they went through the effort, you're absolutely correct. They went through the effort to do everything, maybe an opportunity for that person to say no return. And all of those things that I and others have supported over time, inclusive of the future building of a new shelter, we could put a longer hold time and work longer at adoption and taking care of them. I'm, I'm willing to do that, if we want to provide some, I'm not, I'm not encouraging moving, you know, to, to, to put down immediately, but what I'm saying is that that's a nuisance when that person bring, go pick, they wouldn't have gone through that measure, you know, putting them in the backseat of their car because they don't have a pickup or having to drive with the trunk open. It gets to a point, they try to shoe them off, because that first time they go get that cage wasn't that first in action. They tried to shoe off, shoe off, shoe off, try to find out if someone wants this cat, where this cat, they go through a lot of measures. But, when they get to that point, I'm, I'm saying it's a nuisance. I, I've lived it, I've seen it. So what I'm looking for is a provision to address the one-time mandate return.
Well, let me say this, I think the section on the community cat diversion program says and suggests that we're going to prioritize that method in dealing with these community cats. I don't know that it's necessarily mandatory that we have to return it back. I think that if in fact it is at that point when you drop the cat off a nuisance, then what you, what that individual needs to do at that point in the process is, along with dropping the cat off, file a complaint that the cat is a nuisance, and then the animal care center would have to handle the situation under the nuisance provisions. And in that instance, once a determination is made that there is a nuisance and a nuisance animal, if it's not reclaimed, adopted, transferred, or rehomed, it may be humanly euthanized. And that's what the provision says, that's under section ten-seventy-six.
But we're dependent upon someone to make that determination? Someone who's not going through it to determine if it's a nuisance?
Well, I think maybe by some of the, you know, if filing or when you file the complaint, if you specify what those nuisance are and to the extent of, you know, what you've gone through to deal with the situation, I mean, yeah, I do think that determine, it has to be made regardless whether or not we say it's mandated that you got to return it back if it comes back, and in a nuisance situation, somebody's going to have to make that call, make that determination.
Robert, it seemed like you went to a lot of cities and you got someone coming in from Waco to speak. You ain't found a city that addressed that issue?
Not yet. Now, discussed it with probably seven or eight of the animal shelter directors in, in Louisiana, and I really have not found a solution to that. I will say that the spay neuter program that goes on at Spay Nation is funded in large part by grants, and the grants are chosen by zip codes, and the zip codes are chosen by- by income of those neighborhoods. So a lot of inner-city neighborhoods is where many of these cats have been trapped, neutered, and returned for years from Spay Nation. Very, very rarely do we get one of those cats in the shelter that has been trapped, neutered, and returned. They just, it's very, very rare. It's 1 in 100. So once they've been returned once, I don't know if they don't want to go in the trap, but we don't seem to see them again. It's very rare.
People don't take the time to trap. And I'm gonna tell you this, Robert. I've been in Lafayette all my life. This is the first time I've heard about trapping release as an option.
Right.
So the idea that it's been around means absolutely nothing to me at this point.
It hasn't been around that long. It's relatively recent, the last decade, decade and a half.
Let me make myself clear. I need a solution to the release back into a neighborhood where the person who did the trapping no longer wants the animal, okay? That's my request. Mr. Nocken?
Mine's simple. If this passes, what are we going to do as a government to get the awareness out there so that these people now know exactly what's in the no-kill? Are we doing marketing? Are we going out neighborhoods? I mean, it's one thing to pass an ordinance, but then it just falls by the wayside because the community doesn't understand or have the right information to know what to do in the event that they trap an animal, or what's the process? So I'd like to know what we're doing in the event this passes to get the word out so people know more about the new process.
I apologize for not addressing that from the get-go, and I can't believe I forgot that, but...
Asked a good question.
The ordinance, I wasn't going to say that again. The ordinance, as it's drafted, would become effective upon signature of the mayor or 10 days. The trap-neuter-return component is going to take at least 60 to 90 days to implement, because I need to figure out how we're going to do it, the methodology, the logistics, who's going to do the spay neutering. So we have some time, and it definitely will take a big education component. And I plan on working with both the staff at the shelter and with Cidro on getting the word out, meeting with groups, press releases. It is going to take. It is an educational process. And I should have addressed that from the get-go.
That's no problem.
But the trap-neuter-return is probably at least 60 to 90 days away.
Okay. Very simple. I think the only way this becomes effective to get to where we're talking is that more education and awareness needs to be put out there. And I don't think it'll do justice by having this long discussion, we walk out of here, and nothing really services to the community. So it's important that we get the word out and do it properly, so we know exactly how to handle the situation. That's all my comments. Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Lewis?
Thank you. Robert, question?
Yes, sir.
Once a cat is caught and released, and the person that caught the cat and bring it to the shelter, and then just by all means, I don't want that cat back in my neighborhood or in my house, what rights do they have not to make sure that cat doesn't get back in the facility?
Well, I think you have the same concern as your fellow council members. And the trap-neuter-return component is what I'm saying historically, and all the communities that have put this TNR initiative into place, they so rarely come back in because the nuisance complaints drop dramatically. So what this TNR program does, and it's been done across the country in cities and states around, is it does return them to the communities from whence they came, but very rare do they come back to the shelter.
Yeah, I heard you mention many a time, you did research in different communities. Were they communities our size, or were just little rural communities?
It was a little of both. I mean, Waco, Texas is comparable to us, and Don Bland's going to articulate what's happened over there, because they've been doing it now for quite a few years.
Quite a few years. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Did I have any more council questions? You could go to the next speaker.
The first speaker is, the first speaker of five, is Don Bland.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Don Bland, Executive Director for the Humane Society of Central Texas. We were one of the first clients for Target Zero Institute, and we were the first alumni of hitting a 90% live exit rate. When I came to the shelter in March of 2012, that year we euthanized 2,300 cats that were community and feral cats. And last year, we euthanized 79. Those 79 that we euthanized were injured or sick beyond medical help. We implemented, you know, we had a live exit rate that year in 2012 of 33%. So far this year, our average, and we've got two months left in our fiscal year, is 94.47%. And the majority of our success rate has been the way we handled the feral and the community cats. And we went through all of this with our animal welfare boards. We talked to citizens. We held some work sessions where public was invited and get their opinions. And we took everything into... When we talked to everybody, we took all their complaints and all their stuff in, and then we put it to work. We, at the shelter, will not take any cat that's not sick, injured, or has bitten someone. If it is a cat that comes in that is a feral or a community cat, its only outcome in a shelter is find a barn for it to live in somewhere, and we could only find so many barns. So we were euthanizing cats every day to make room for the next wave that was coming in. And that's, you know, hard on the staff also. And our community wanted to save animals. So we took it all, and we just won't take a cat in. We tell them to take it to the low-cost clinic if they trap it, and they can take it down there for $25, get it TNR'd, and get it re-released. And I can tell you, we were, all the years that we've been doing this, I can count the complaints on one hand. They just didn't happen. Most of the problems, once they were TNR'd, disappeared. I had one gentleman that was insistent that he was still going to have a problem, and we gave him solutions. Get a motion-activated water sprinkler. We gave him a lot of solutions. I called him back afterwards, you know, after a week or two. He hadn't even seen the cat back. You know, he didn't have a problem, and he still doesn't have a problem. So a lot of the problems do disappear. How it works, I'm not the genius there, but it just works. We only had one cat that we had to relocate, because there was a homeowner that was going to kill the cat. And if he had of, he would have gotten in trouble, but we didn't want to jeopardize the life of an animal, because our community has come together and said, we want to save animals. We don't want to euthanize. We don't want to kill animals. So we did relocate that cat to another colony. And a lot of times, that's not successful, because they don't want to take new cats in. But we did relocate that one, because we thought that that was the only option for that cat to live. Education, marketing, we spent a lot of time having, you know, speaking to the press, talking about the programs, what we're doing to save the animals, and how it's going to work. Educating our community, that was a key factor in it, and our community got behind it. And they could see that, you know, they didn't want us to kill thousands of animals. 6,000 animals in 2012 we killed, you know. They didn't want to see that, and it's been very successful. Our city, you know, it was the person that trapped it that was responsible for taking it and paying for it to get spayed or neutered. And then we, there's been spaying and neutering in our community for years, hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars by low-cost birth control clinic. But one of the things that we did as a city is, after several years of this, we said, we need to help those citizens that can't even afford the $25. So they put money in, and if they had a city water bill, they could go to the low-cost clinic and get that cat fixed, and the city would pick up the tab for that. And that's been very successful in those, helping those people that truly can't afford it. That is in a nutshell. You know, I could answer a lot of your questions, if you have any. I gave y'all a packet to pass out that shows a lot of the statistical information that backs up all of this. And I'm available for any question, anytime. Y'all are more than welcome to come and visit and see what we've done in our community, and it has been remarkable. Thank you.
Don't seem to have any questions at this time, but that could change. Next speaker?
Amy Fisher? Amy Fisher?
Amy Fi... Kyle, you can't, you can't, no, no. That's not allowed. That's not allowed. Ma'am, ma'am, we have, we have, we have protocol in here, and that's a violation of our protocol, so I'm going to ask you to take the animal out at this time, and you could return, okay? But you're going to need to remove the animal from the building. Next speaker, please.
Doctor Estevan Berkeley?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I wish to encourage you to support this ordinance, and doing so on two grounds. First, I want to tell you a story. In 2010, my wife and I bought a house. It had been empty for approximately two and a half years before we moved in. When we moved in, there were two cats that were living under the house that were being fed by neighbors, apparently. One of them seemed to be quite friendly with other cats. She's also quite hard to trap. She managed to have three litters before we managed to catch her. Fortunately, the good people at Spay Nation were able to help us out. We now have a smallish colony of cats. They're sweet. Sometimes they fight, sometimes they don't. They're all fixed. They're happy. They're safe. They're secure. And this is because of the TNR process. It works. I understand many of your concerns about nuisance cats. A lot of nuisances arise because of lack of spay neuter that it fixes itself. Now, that's one reason. It works. I've seen it in my own yard. Oh, the cats have also made friends with a squirrel they share their cat food with. The other thing is, my day job is, I'm a philosophy professor. This ordinance rests upon a sound philosophical basis. It's a position known as utilitarianism. Important proponent of utilitarianism is Professor Peter Singer of Princeton University. He is an advocate of this approach, because simply killing cats doesn't work, as the results we have seen so far. So I urge you strongly to support this ordinance. I think it's an excellent idea. The current method doesn't work. This hopefully will. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thomas Alonso?
Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Thomas Alonso. I'm the board president of the Wildcat Foundation. I know it's been a long night. I can tell y'all are tired. Lots of things have been said. I just want to point out, this is a great program. I've seen how it works, and I've seen how it doesn't work. I'm sure some of you have traveled to other countries, third-world countries like Belize, Costa Rica, Panama. You can go to the cities like ours, and there are cats everywhere. I was concerned about that when I was down there one day, so I questioned a local store owner. He was from Canada. He explained to me that the government takes care of that every five years or so. I didn't want the details, but I'm sure it was an inhumane slaughter is what he was talking about. And that's what we're trying to avoid here. That's all. And Chairman Boudreaux, I want to address your question. I know you have concerns about that little old lady that has the cat that's getting in her yard, and that's, and can she get rid of that? We are going to get rid of it. And the way we're going to do that is, if you pass this ordinance, we're going to flatten that cat population, so they don't keep spreading, so we don't have more cats causing more problems. That's the key. That's going to answer your question. I think that's what the mayor was saying, was that that one problem, we've got that one problem now, and we're going to address it with a major solution. If we have this trap and release, we get these cats, over the years, it's been proven by every study that's been done that it works. These are the Humane Society of United States, the ASPCA, PetSmart Charities, Best Friends, Animal Sanctuary, they all will tell you. The city of Austin, Texas, will tell you. This is the system that works. This is the way to solve your little old lady's problem in that neighborhood with the bad cat. So we ask for your support, and thank y'all for listening. I appreciate it.
Next speaker, please.
Christine Menord?
Either one. Hi. Hi, I'm a citizen. I love cats, and I hope that you support this resolution. One of the things about community cats is they're going to be killing rats and mice, and rats and mice will go into people's houses and eat their wires. So having community cats, it could be a nuisance on somebody's car or digging up their garden, but they will be killing the rats and mice and sometimes snakes. So that's what I want to say. Nanette Cook is my council member, and I do hope you support it. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
We did have eight citizens who signed in who did not wish to speak, but supports the ordinance.
Okay. Can somebody tell us, how many, the gentleman from Waco indicated, did we have any public hearings, and do we have citizen input, and can somebody give me a snapshot of what that looked like?
I can address that, Chairman Boudreaux. Early on, maybe, Mayor, two or three months into your campaign, I mean, into your, after you were sworn in as mayor-president, we had a big public hearing held at UL. We had a couple of hundred people in attendance. I think there was one person in opposition to the whole trap-neuter-return, Target Zero report, but we had a couple of hundred people. I've probably spoken with at least 100 people over the course of the last eight to 10 months, veterinarians, cat lovers, dog lovers, people of different sorts. But as to a bunch of public hearings, no. We had the one big one early on, and I've communicated with some of those people that attended that since.
Right. And I know this was a big issue during the mayor presidency election, but I didn't know about that meeting, and I've been on this council 10 years.
I think it was in March of 2000, of his first year, if I'm not mistaken. We had about 200 people in attendance.
So, just setting up. So what I've learned here today is that when you spay and neuter, the behavior changes. Obviously, the population shrinks, because you don't have that reproduction. And that presence, as Attorney Alonso indicated, that presence kind of diminishes, if you would, kind of self-care, it kind of starts to take care of itself.
Yes, sir.
And what I've also heard here is that, in almost absolute 100% of the time, that we don't see them return back to the shelter. In other words, whatever is causing what some may consider to be a nuisance, kind of goes away, because those that get spay neutered here, they don't come back.
That is correct.
Okay. So this is my question. What's the harm in allowing someone the opportunity to reject it being returned back into their community, if, wherever you place them, they're not coming back anyway?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
Okay. Once a cat goes through this process?
Yes, sir.
They brought back into the community, and they're no longer a problem?
Correct.
Okay. What I asked you for earlier is an ability for the person who goes through the effort to remove the cat?
Right.
From their area, okay? Because, again, we say in community cats, but then I don't think they're going to go set a trap on someone else's property, right?
No, no, absolutely. No.
So that's what they're trying to avoid, okay? So if there's not going to be a return of that cat once they go through this process, why can't that person opt out it being returned back to the location where it was trapped? Because they no longer want it, because, again, the cat isn't coming back according to this process. So the cat will no longer be an issue. It's just that that individual doesn't want the cat released at that location.
What we're saying is, the cat is returned from the location from which it came, but in all the cities that have done this, the nuisance, the cats are no longer the nuisance that they were before they were spay neutered. And I think that's evidence by the...
If I bring your cat, if I go get a trap, I put it out in my backyard, I capture a cat, and I bring it to you?
Yes, sir.
Exactly where are you going to return it to?
It would be returned to the address or the street from which it came, to where it came from.
Bring it back to my house, Robert?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep.
I don't want the cat. That's my point. It's not as if you're going to put it at Northside. You're not going to put it at the abandoned daycare. You're not going to put it... You're not going to put it at the corner store. You're bringing it back to the spot where the capture took place, where that person don't want it. And all I'm asking for is an ability for a person to say, do not return it back to my address. And that's what I'm having trouble with seeing what's wrong with that. I'm not saying euthanize the cat. I'm saying don't return it back to that address.
Well, the problem, I would think, is that most people who went through it don't realize that when a cat comes back, it's not as big of a problem. So you might have 80% of the people saying, I don't want the cat back. So then instead of a 90% live outcome, we're pretty much where we are right now, 22% live outcome. Our live outcome on cats last year was 22%.
You're going worst-case scenario, but okay, okay. Mr. Terrio.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things. What Mr. Boudreaux mentioned, and what I mentioned, and some subtle changes on what he want to talk about is that what classifies a nuisance, how many times, you know, and why are they bringing it back? And then I wanted the verbiage added to the $75 euthanasia fee that lets the person that's paying that fee know about that it could be taken by some other kind of animal group, right? To where the cat may not be euthanized. How are you guys going to get those changes or provide us? Would that need to be an amendment for either Mr. Boudreaux or myself to see that? Would that have to be brought to this council?
Yeah, I mean, for those things to happen, it would necessitate an amendment.
Okay.
And on the TNR part, on Mr. Boudreaux and Mr. Lewis's concerns, that's not going to happen immediately. It's going to be 60 or 90 days in the process, and we have to work through that. And I think we could certainly have some discussion with respect to the paid euthanasia increase from 12 to 75. That would necessitate an amendment. If you want to try to do that tonight, we'd be happy to work with you and get some verbiage and bring it at the next council meeting for introduction at the next available council meeting. And we'll bring that amendment to articulate your concern that if someone pays for euthanasia and it's adopted, then they could get the money back.
Yeah. Or if they're in agreement that, hey, I'm going to pay you 75, and I'm okay if some other group adopts it, you know, I'm fine, I'm signing that.
And I think in California, that does happen. They just said, you know, my mother died, my father died. The dog could be in perfectly good health, but you have out-of-state children. They have no way of taking care of the animal. So, you know, unfortunately, many people opt to euthanize.
Appreciate it. Now, one thing we haven't got into tonight, and I'm going to try and wrap this up, is that there are a number of groups, and I've talked to many, that have contributed and will contribute to the effectiveness of this ordinance, which voluntary groups, am I correct? I'm talking about, you've got Spay Nation.
Oh, yes, Spay Nation, the KDA Animal Aid, oh, yes, absolutely, flash.
You know I'm a money, dollars guy, okay? Spay Nation is not funded, and neither will any of these other groups who are going to be involved with this, to my knowledge, funded by LCG or Lafayette at this point. Am I correct?
Yeah, I mean, right now, yeah, KDA Animal Aid, we, you know, we don't have a relationship with them on a per nose fee or anything like that, something we want to look at. But Spay Nation is funded by grants and private donations.
That's what I thought, I wanted to make sure, okay. One thing I want to mention, and you've kind of harped on this a few times in dealing with Mr. Boudreaux, is that, again, I'm pretty experienced with cats. I've had, I've had probably 15 cats over the past 20 years that have been spayed. Some have just showed up in my house as adult cats. We've taken them, gone spay, neuter, and vaccinated them, okay? Just because you vaccinate a cat, especially the males, okay? It does change their behavior. But I can assure you this, I've had some males that we have spayed and neutered that were on my truck before I had them spayed and neutered, and they're on my truck after we've had them spayed and neutered, okay? They'll do that, they'll get into your screens, they'll get into your flower beds, they'll get into everything that we discussed earlier. Just because you spay or neuter them does not mean they're going to stop all those actions. You can see that the temperament does change, but all in all, they're still males. And again, like I said earlier, they still will go around and spray your tires and whatever else they feel, so to mark their territories.
I guess that's because your cats are country cats, and my cats are city cats, so maybe they're not as problematic.
I don't know.
It's all those other animals you have there that are causing them to be rambunctious. No, I totally understand that that's a possibility. I think some of the cities that have put this in place have seen a drastic reduction in nuisance, but I'm certainly not going to say that it can't occur.
Yeah, and finally, the last thing is, we all agree, there's no way you guys can be 100% effective on here. There's going to be a number of them that are going to slip through your, you know,
Absolutely.
The fingers of everybody, and you're going to have the little cute kittens that you saw earlier. There's going to be a bunch of them that go around. We still see it today, especially, especially out in the unincorporated.
This is, this is a drastic change from the ordinance that's currently in play. I kind of liken it to the Unified Development Code. This is not going to be set forever. We're going to have to come and tweak it as we see how things are going.
Don't compare it to the Unified Development Code.
Well, I mean, we understand that it might need modification, just like the UDC did when it was adopted. It's not going to be perfect, but we're willing to tweak it and continue to improve it as we go along.
You don't seem willing to tweak anything now, though. Something that people are experiencing today.
Well, I have 60 to 90 days before I implement the TNR component of this, and I commit to get with you and have some more dialogue on this.
It's not about me, Robert.
Well, you're a constituent.
Yeah, it's, and we're missing the boat. And it's very, very inappropriate to go from a suggested change from a concern to the fact that you think the only option is to euthanize. And that's not the only option available. There hasn't been any thought put into this just from the request. And that really, really does concern me. Because all I'm asking you is that, what we're saying is that the person who captures and says, I don't want it, you're telling that person, I don't have a choice. And I know this is a much different situation. But dealing with nuisances through Lafayette Consolidated Government in our communities has been devastating. Because when we try to address housing issues, we lean heavily on owners, we lean heavily on landlords who do absolutely nothing to correct their problems.